All right, we will call to order the February 25th, 2025 work session for the Oregon City Historic Review Board. And I guess we'll just start now with our staff presentation.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Green.
Oh, we need to call roll.
You need to call roll.
Board member Lawrence.
Present.
Board member Edgar.
Present.
Vice Chair Green.
Present.
Chair Powell.
Present.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Green and HRB members. We have a really great work session today. It's based on a work plan item from our 2023-2025 work plan, which is to better understand kind of the market of fiberglass windows and also aluminum clad wood and vinyl windows out there in anticipation of writing a template condition of approval that provides a more metric-based checkmark approach to understanding which windows would meet the goal of the historic review board. So just want to remind everybody, this is for new construction. This is not for historic rehab or additions. This is for brand-new, new construction within historic districts. Okay. Our existing policy does allow fiberglass windows for historic review board new construction guidelines. And really, the goal tonight is to have a conversation back and forth, talk about policy. What we don't want to do is get down into so much detail. We're not writing the condition tonight. We're not providing, you know, I like that window. I don't like that window. I like a two-fourth reveal. I don't like a, you know, one and three-fourth. You know, we're not getting down to that technical. That's Kristen's job to help translate. And imagine, if you will, I have a little button that is the two-technical button I may press if we kind of spiral it a little bit too much detail and we're looking at a time like. If we can provide direction for Kristen to come back at an April or March meeting with a draft redline based on what you say, what we want to see, what we don't want to see. That's, that's really what we're paying Kristen to translate, let that into a technical condition of approval. So I'm going to hand it over back to Kristen Minor. She does have some guests in the audience and we have a show and tell tonight. And she'll be asking you some questions as we move forward to get your policy direction.
Thank you, Christina. My name is Kristen Minor and this is the first meeting on the topic of windows that. Let me make sure I'm not creating too much echo here. Windows that would be allowed in new construction, as Christina said, in historic districts here in Oregon City or on landmark properties. So in addition to myself, tonight we have two window reps who loved windows here and talked to me at length and have done all of this work just to kind of make sure that you understand their product. So Patrick Lawton from Pella and Michael Lieber from Marvin. They definitely will be available for questions and I'm going to also have them come up when we're ready to physically, you know, kind of mill around and look at the window samples here and they can tell you what exactly they have for you to look at. In terms of the agenda tonight, I, I think I envision this going that I'm speaking to you for probably 15 or 20 minutes and then we'll go ahead and look at the samples. And then with you back at the dais so that we're all mic'd up and on the record, we can have questions for me and for the window reps. If a question does come up and we're down here looking at samples, we can kind of get that figured out if we have to, but. And then finally, discussion of my questions for you so that you can give me guidance.
Right.
Okay. Um, let's see, the questions that are going to be asked of you are in the memo, which you all received and they, and I'll, I'll ask that they be put up on the screen here in a little while. I don't otherwise have a PowerPoint presentation tonight, so we'll, we'll try to keep it casual. I do have some handouts, though. I'm hoping we can avoid discussion of actual dimensions or getting too deeply into the construction details. So the idea is that you can provide a general sense of what's appropriate and I will translate that into a condition of approval for review and discussion in another meeting. And as I said, this project is limited to new construction only. The window condition would be used in historic districts as well as on other designated historic properties throughout Oregon City whenever new construction is proposed. You already have, or we already have, some guidance in the HRB policy number 10 on windows that does touch on new construction and not just window replacements or retrofits. And also in the memo, I pulled in a few of the design guidelines for new construction for reference. The window policy says that on new and existing accessory structures and on new and existing non-contributing structures in the, excuse me, in the Kenema Historic District, fiberglass and wood and plastic blended material windows are permitted. So I wanted to spend a few minutes talking about the National Park Service and the Secretary of the Interior Standards. The guidelines that Oregon City uses in the National Register listed historic districts are, like most jurisdictions around the state and probably national, they regulate development in historic districts based on the Secretary of the Interior Standards for rehabilitation. The standards speak to alterations of a historic building so as to retain its historic character and its materials as much as possible. But those standards also can be used in historic districts. So if you think about replacing the word "building" with "district", which of course that is the resource, then the, the standards are very clear in terms of asking the applicant to not tell a, a quote-unquote "false" story. So the most important standard in regulating new construction is standard number nine, which says, "New additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction shall not destroy historic materials that characterize the property. The new work shall be differentiated from the old and shall be compatible with the massing size, scale, and architectural features to protect the historic integrity of the property and its environment." Do you need a second?
Get a computer going.
Okay. Yeah. Do you want to maybe pause just for a minute?
Yeah, yeah, sure. That's all it took. Oh, great. Okay. So when we consider that set of standards for rehabilitation, it's clear that the foundation of good preservation practice is to achieve compatibility with most of the larger attributes of, of the new construction or the alteration. In other words, size and height, general proportion, things like that, while also, at the same time, looking to provide clues to the observer that this is not actually historic construction. So windows can be one way to do that. They're, you know, at that kind of smaller size than the larger attributes of new construction. And so windows can be one way to strike a good balance between compatibility and differentiation. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about a few of the handouts that you received. So the first one I'm going to talk briefly about is this Windows Terms handout and it's the one with the photographs on the front. The, the images on this page I used in my University of Oregon class on doing architectural surveys and I wanted students to be able to identify historic and nonhistoric windows when they're doing a survey. It, it takes a while sometimes to recognize what are those components and, and how to look for them. For the purposes of our discussion tonight and for the HRB, aside from a few pieces of terminology that you probably already know, such as drip cap and sill, you can see how traditional wood window features developed to keep water out. So some of those, some of those attributes are projecting trim, you know, that has a water edge for water to drip off of, lapped construction, and insetting the window into the wall. All of those served the, the purpose of keeping water out. But of course, today, we have windows that are made of all different materials. So while those attributes are often still important in wood construction, they become a lot less important in keeping water out if you have a window made of fiberglass, say, or, or vinyl. You still want to keep water out of the wall itself, but the window becomes a little bit more impervious. On the second page of this handout, the Window Terms handout, there's just a couple of things I wanted to point out. On the upper-left diagram, I added a note so that you can see what's the sheathing plane. And this is pretty standard in wood construction. Is that the two-by-sixes or two-by-fours or even two-by-tens, whatever the wall is constructed of, then gets a fairly solid layer of sheathing on the outside. And then outside of that goes the waterproofing layer. Used to be tar paper, now more often Tyvek. And then the exterior cladding goes on outside of that. The sheathing layer is important because that's often where the window is installed against. So that's where you're going to find, if the window comes with a nail fin or a flange, that's typically where you're going to see that, that plane or that, that piece to help the contractor install the window. Let's see. So one thing I wanted to mention with this sheathing plane is one aspect we're going to be looking at and discussing tonight is the depth of the window in the wall. So keep in mind that siding is, it has different depths. I, I have two different illustrations of that on the, those top two. One of them shows brick, which of course is, is significantly deeper than wood lapped siding. But even wood lapped siding has quite a bit of, of variation. So you can, you can find, you know, wood shingle siding, board and batten. There's, there's quite a variety. So it's very difficult to actually put a, to specify that window glass has to be in from the face of the siding a certain depth because that, that, that depth could be all over the map depending on what that, that contractor or homeowner chooses to side the building with. But we are going to look at the comparison chart in just a minute. It has several different depth measurements and I'll be talking a little bit more about that. But there are also ways to change the window depth in the wall in some cases. Okay. The next handout I would like to refer to is the Windows Comparison Sheet. And you all hopefully got a, an updated sheet in front of you tonight. It just has a few, a few updated numbers within it, but I want to make sure that you have the, the most accurate one. Now, we're focusing on fiberglass windows here, which is why there's a, a dark line around kind of the, the middle of the sheet is because those are all fiberglass lines, although there, I did include, Anderson has a Fibrex material that I included kind of in this center area, partly because I saw that in Oregon City's Window Bulletin that there is an allowance for that wood combination vinyl material. And that's basically what this Fibrex is. I'm afraid I don't have a, a, a sample of that for us to look at tonight. There are still a few gaps in this chart, but I think for the most part, everything is filled in within the, you know, the fiberglass lines area, the, the central area of this chart. And just to say a few things more generally, vinyl windows do tend to have thicker frames and they don't quite have the, the durability of other products. Generally, vinyl windows will last 20 to maybe 25 years. Fiberglass windows tend to last quite a bit longer, 30 to 40-plus years. And wood, unless you can get maybe from rebuilding center or something, unless you can find some old growth windows, which could last sometimes 100 years and more, we're seeing in old buildings. Newer wood windows, however, tend to last approximately 40 years. That's just, that's just a, a sort of industry-wide guess. Let's see, what else? Oh, I did also want to say about vinyl windows that the, the Pella window listed here on the chart is more durable and more profiled than the product that I showed on the, on the illustration on the front of this Window Terms sheet. So this is more of a, you know, a, a, the most inexpensive vinyl window you can, you can buy from, from a, a big box store. So there are some differences and, and vinyl windows definitely have been improving. So we could talk about that if you'd like. I don't want to start getting too deep into the numbers on this comparison chart, but I, I wanted to point out a few things. Why don't I talk about depth just for, just for a moment? The column labeled "Glass Inset" is important because it gives you a sense of how far back the glass plane is in the wall of the building. If the glass and the sheathing, so again, if you, if you want to refer to, you know, these, these sections here. So if the glass and the sheathing are approximately in the same plane, coplanar, then the siding will be forward of the glass definitively. And trim can then be added to provide more depth and more shadow line as well. There's a final column in here that's cost. And of course, cost is difficult to pin down because you can, you can customize your windows with so many different features or interior finishes or, you know, the operability affects these costs. So I recognize that the, you know, the, the ranges are pretty big. This, this can, this can definitely be questions for the, the two reps here tonight if that's something you want to understand more. But I tried to find cost ranges that included installation by the manufacturer because they will, they, they tend to give you a better warranty. And if you, you know, if, if a general contractor does it, these prices would be less, but you also, you know, you run into a question of whether the owner wants to take that risk. So this might be a good point for us to invite both Patrick and Michael up to the front and to have us here looking at all the window samples that they have. And if you want to bring your sheet, that might help you because, you know, each of these is from a different line or, you know, they're, they're representing a, a different row on this sheet. So you might want to just note that or, or remember what you're looking at. So with that, come on down. Left.
Mike?
Sure.
Okay. That should also be, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead and tell us what, what we're looking at.
So in front of you, you have what would represent two of the Marvin collections, two of the fiberglass collections. There is a third collection here that I did not bring today that is more of a, we call it modern. It's a much deeper frame profile and it's not meant, I mean, it wouldn't fit into a historical application in any way whatsoever, right? So what we have is, we have, we call it Essential and we call it Elevate. We used to call this Integrity, for those of you who are familiar with Marvin from long ago, right? Essential would be an all-fiberglass or an all-Ultrex. Ultrex is what we, our trademark name for our fiberglass, right? And the Elevate line is a fiberglass or an Ultrex frame, which you can see pretty clearly in these, the corner samples here, right? So the actual structure and the exposed surfaces of this window are fiberglass and there is an interior wood cladding that's about a half inch thick on the inside that sits away from the, the rough opening of, of the structure. So when this was to be installed, you're, you're out of that. You're not touching, you know, wood-to-wood contact there. This would give a more, you know, traditional look. This is our first fiberglass window we did develop in the 90s and it came from our history of being a wood window manufacturer, right? So some of the profiles you're going to see here will, will more closely mimic that. Not exactly, right? It is a different substrate, a different material entirely. But that is where the wood interior comes from. The all-Ultrex, the Essential window came around, around the year 2000, 2001. Right? That is our all-fiberglass option in this line. Definitely has, you know, less options if you, if you want to think of it that way, right? As you move into the, the fiberglass and wood, you're going to have more options. One of the big limitations, I think, that will, that needs to be noted is in this Essential line, that sash thickness is, is pretty thin and the profile is, there's not much to it there. So there is no simulated divided light options there. That is only grills between the glasses, as we would call it there. If a simulated divided light was a priority, right, for the project, that, that product there would not fit our needs, right? We would be moving into, into this product here. Uh, I can't say much about it, but we are having that. We will be launching an all-fiberglass version of this product in early 2026 in our market. So profiles will all pretty much be exactly the same from what we're talking about today, which is think about all-fiberglass window with STL option.
I'm going to add just a, just a note to that. So in this window comparison sheet, what Michael was talking about, so in the column that says multi-pane divisions available question? So if you go down and see that, that line that says Marvin Essential, it says spacers only. So that's what he was talking about, that you couldn't get the, the external grid in this line. So that is one of the questions that we'll be talking about is what's appropriate for simulated divided lights.
A double hung. A double hung, we, all I see is this, how, how does a hung double hung appear to externally if somebody looks at it? Does it appear like a wood, a historic window?
You're looking, this, this is the all-fiberglass double hung, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, it, it, yes and no, right? The, this dimension is going to be different, right? On a, on a wood window, right, the store window, you're not going to have a miter frame. Corner, you're going to have butt joints.
But if that went up there.
This one appears still, this is the Elevate line, right? So it's wood to the interior. You're going to have a deeper setback. You're going to have a, a glazing profile here, right? We would call this like a.
Yeah, well, it, well, it come down in the butt just like this does.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It doesn't overlap.
It's, it's a true, when, when those two sashes, those rails will perfectly align with each other.
Okay.
If that's what you're asking for.
Yep.
What about the Ultimate Line?
What do you want to know?
Well, so.
You, uh, the Ultimate Lines, so smaller onions, wood, traditional interior, fiberglass exterior, but really traditional double hung, you know, on that Ultimate Line. So we see it here. Yeah, so I, I didn't bring the Ultimate Line. The Ultimate Line is not a fiberglass window. It would be either an all-wood or an aluminum clad product. Yes, that is a very design and option-oriented product where if we wanted to get really deep into the, the details of matching historical applications, that would be the product I would want to be talking about. Because that's where I have a lot of additional, you know, manufacturing capabilities, right? But that's, yeah, that, it is clad or an all-wood product.
And there are aluminum clad wood lines up here at the, the top of the chart.
The, the only reason I bring it up is that it's a, you know, great product and.
Yeah.
It's very historically accurate.
Oh, I agree. Uh, we were talking fiberglass, so I kind of left that off.
And do you think, does that product with the exterior muttons, is that the only shape or do you offer them with a plaid shape? That was one of the questions I.
This is currently the only shape.
Yeah.
Sure, that's the Elevate.
This, this is the Elevate, correct.
Okay.
Unless we went to the ultimate.
Unless you went to the ultimate, then. Unless you went to the ultimate, then you're going to have various widths and different profiles.
Yep.
Let's go ahead and take a look at the Pella samples too here.
Blue. So my fiberglass product is the Impervia. Um, this is a poltruded fiberglass that's a polymer, oh, heat set resin. It's a very strong window. Um, this, this is the only style of this window. It's not, I don't have options like they do over there. Um, I would, as far as your question, I would utilize the reserve product. That would be my comparable window to their ultimate. Um, and that's a wood clad. So just to answer that question, um, my profiles here are going to be, as you see them, the glass sits pretty much flush. So in my situation, I would look to the construction of the building to create depths. Um, there's different ways to do that. You can do wood trim, do five quarter trim. Um, you can do what's called a buck. You have a two by six wall. You can put it, scout a two by four around the opening and set the window back and you'll gain about, depending on how big the window is. In this case, it's three quarter. Uh, you can get a lot of depth through construction.
It's not a pretty common detail, Patrick?
Absolutely.
And is there a cost uptick?
So you're talking about oversized in the opening, three inches, and then scabbing on two by four as minimal, and then the labor to do that. Um, I'd say it's not a big deal at all in as far as cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Do these have like a snap and nail fin or for new construction application?
It sits in this accessory groove over here.
Okay.
So fine. My nail fin would sit back about inch and eighth.
Okay.
Yep. And then I have an offset that can bring it up to seven eight.
Yeah, which would not normally apply for more traditional look.
Okay, so.
Um, how about exterior mutton styles for these line? I'm there. Between the glass only with these.
Yeah, like, once we're required for something like that in historical, I would move to my wood clads.
You know, I would, I would love, I would love to have a historic window sitting next to one of these products where we could take a look at it side by side, kind of the characteristics. And when I rebuilt my house, I took a, one of an 1880 window directly to a shop and said, I want forty like this in low E. And that's what I did. But they came out appropriate. And, uh, but it was, I set the example right, right there about what was there. And so, and I think sometimes we lose track of what, what exists and the profile of what it is when we're looking at these things.
Um, Tim, do you have any questions?
No, I, I'm, I'm, I don't, I've, I've got some thoughts, but we'll talk about that later. But, uh, I can see pretty well. Thank you for showing me those. I can see them from here pretty well.
Okay. Before we dive into the questions that I've posed for you tonight, I did want to say that I have been a historic consultant for a long time. I've done work in Oregon and Washington. Um, uh, I did a design standards for the city of La Grande a couple of years ago. And I bring that up because windows were a really big focus. And they were a big focus for La Grande particularly because, um, folks being able to, um, both paint and fix their own windows was a really big deal, um, bigger than it would be in, you know, where we live in sort of the, you know, I five corridor where we can easily get somebody out to fix our, our, our windows. And so it is important for each jurisdiction to really think about what's important in setting the standards for what's right for you. Um, I was also the chair of the Portland Landmarks Commission for five of my eight years on the commission. And I've done quite a bit of tax credit work. Um, and I do have some recommendations on the questions that I'm asking you. And that doesn't necessarily mean that my recommendations are right for you, but I do think, you know, it's helpful for me to tell you, um, where I'm coming from on all of these questions. Ultimately, of course, it is your direction that will shape the window's condition for Oregon City. So with that, let's go ahead and take a look at all of these questions. The first one is depth. And as I noted already in the window comparison sheet, part of what I think is, uh, important when you look at new construction is that windows that sit sort of outboard from the wall look, um, out of place. That is my personal recommendation. However, when the glass is co-planar with the sheathing, you're still adding trim, you're still adding, um, you're still adding the siding. And there is a way to make most of these windows sit back further in the wall as Patrick was explaining. Now, um, for me, there, I, I, I do get a little worried about the cost implications of asking people to do that. But if it's offset by a cheaper window, it's good to give people options to be able to, um, you know, perhaps buy a slightly less expensive window and finish it in a way that looks, that makes it look more appropriate. So for me, I would say the glass should always be inset from the siding. And again, I don't want to get into dimensions, but I, I, I would love to, um, you know, hear more about this from you all. Um, perhaps we should just go ahead and, and talk about each of these questions in turn. And I'll turn it over to, to you to talk about depth in the wall.
All right. Um, thoughts?
So I know we're here to kind of talk about appropriateness for window replacements, but.
No, that's not, that's, well, it's, it's only new construction.
New, oh, the new construction, okay.
And that's, that's a big difference.
Right, 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 right. Okay. Um, then no, both the questions I had.
Okay.
I have, um, I, I think that, I definitely think depth, I think we should have, there should be an appropriate depth. How that's defined through, um, trim, um, or possibly a sill or a drip cap or something like that to show that depth. I think that's, that's something that we definitely should, um, should have. Because, you know, while that's, that's certainly compatible with, with the, with the district, um, there is some differentiation if we go to a fiberglass or a clad window. Um, I don't want to get into other parts of this at this point, but it's just speaking of depth. I, I definitely think that's a should be a requirement.
Okay. Uh, I believe that we set, had a case in that went into appeals here in Oregon City in Kanema. And in it, in the cottage home development, we, uh, it was ruled that they needed to, uh, create depth and trim out the windows. And the contractor appealed and the city commission affirmed our ruling. And, and so there already, we have a case where that came up in Oregon City. But within this, uh, one of the biggest problems we see is just inappropriate side, uh, uh, width and height in use of, in a dimensional view where the stock windows, uh, are not even close to historic, uh, designs that would be appropriate in a historic district. And so that's inherently been a problem when with the, what is coming, what they come up, so all of a sudden you have a, a square window or one that's, uh, more horizontal than it is height. And that's just absolutely the opposite. So normally on a historic windows around in our area, they're on a, uh, if they're a one to three, one width, the three height.
Okay. I think what you're bringing up then is maybe pertinent to question seven, you know, something else, because I hadn't really flagged the dimensions of the window. Um.
But when you see the windows that are stocked like this, when they are not, they're just so many, most, all of them are inappropriate in, in that sense.
I'm just doing a quick time check. Um, it's six forty-two, so we need to get through the next six questions. So I don't want to rush you, but I want to make sure we get through all of the questions.
Um, so we're kind of going through these questions one by one. Uh, any comment on that first one there as far as the placement of the glass?
No, none.
I, I have a struggle with it myself because, um, you know, as I looked at questions in general, I was trying to resolve in my mind what, how authentic should the end result appear to the product that was the time period of significance? Uh, and it, in, in the preservation community, which is, I'm relatively new to it, seems like some differentiation, uh, is good and perhaps important. Um, so in particular with this one, I'm concerned. So I guess I would say what, realizing that some differentiation from actual authenticity, in my mind, I was grappling with what makes a product appear artificial versus authentic. Um, you know, so dimensions is certainly part of it. The glazing is part of it, and I appreciate what you've heard from other communities as far as the glazing. The concern that I have with this one is that I think it eliminates, you know, a significant portion of a product line that's available to the applicants. Um, and, uh, the, the available options are to some extent limited. We've already discovered in that maybe you have only interior spacers available. So that, if we decide that's not appropriate, that product line goes away. So I'm concerned with overburdening applicants. And, and that one, in my mind, would not be a high priority because so many of the manufacturers have the glazing out towards the front with a nail fin installation.
Yeah, I think that when we're talking about new construction too, I mean, we've talked about this a little bit before, but, um, I mean, there are different schools of thought, right? But the, kind of the definition of, um, new construction as opposed to the preservation of older buildings is that you should differentiate between new construction and older buildings. So I think that it wouldn't be, personally, I feel like it wouldn't be appropriate to put a completely older looking, even if it's just a replica window in a building that is of new construction unless, unless you're really mimicking period style. Um, and I find that with new construction, that really typically isn't the case that they're going to spend all the money to put in all the character defining features of an older building. So yeah, I mean, I think that if, if we're talking about trying to stay really purist with the old style, it does end up being cost prohibitive, um, to the applicants. And I don't know that that's necessary if we're just talking about new construction. If you're talking about replacement, that's one thing, but new construction is an entirely different thing. And yeah, I agree with you.
But I, I counter that. If, in a historic district, in a historic house, the windows are the eyes of the building. And they almost, it's, it's kind of, if I could say, you could have it or in a lie or, or, and that kind of mindset of saying, changing it out, it should not detract and degrade the importance of the historic district in itself because the district itself is the product.
Right. And I would like to say, I agree with that too. I just think there's like a middle ground that we could reach, you know?
But it should be there. This is where the windows are in a very important element of any new construction in that they should be appropriate in appearance. Now, you don't have to be rocket science and make it dot the I across the T, but what you, it should not detract. And so there's an imagery situation where it should be correct in imagery.
I, I really appreciate the, the, the conversation here. Um, and I, and I definitely feel like there's, there's some, you know, there's, there's some agreement, but there's also, you know, some, some disagreement. Let's come back to this one if we, if we need to. And let's see if we can knock off a few other of these questions. Um, the next question I have is really about material. And this could be a fairly simple one. So, um, the window bulletin does, um, allow for the Anderson Fibrex. And I just wanted to make sure that this commission, um, would be open to allowing for that material, um, even if you're not allowing for other vinyl windows. So I think the, the Fibrex is a sixty percent vinyl, forty percent wood fiber, just.
Can we get Chair Powell in maybe to start? He has a thought?
Well, I, I have, I obviously I can't see that Fibrex material. Um, I'm not a big fan of vinyl, um, in the, you know, in the historic district. Um, I think the fiberglass and clad and all wood, that's, that's always been where I've gone. Um, so, you know, if you can help me with the, with material Fibrex and how does that look? Um, I, I don't have a specific concern if, if it looks better than vinyl. I just, I think vinyl looks cheap and I, um, and I, and even if it is getting better, I don't think it's there yet.
I agree with Chair Powell, however, uh, with materials grow. And I think that making a predilection on material at this point for anything is, is kind of a misnomer because it, it shouldn't, it shouldn't factor into what we're talking about. Because whether it's clad in aluminum, whether it's clad in fiberglass, whether it's clad in Fibrex, whether it's clad in whatever's going to come out next year for vinyl, shouldn't be a supporting factor in decisions that we make, as long as it's a quality material. And even at that point, it's not a question for us. That's a question for the homeowner, that's a question for the building, that's a question for somebody else. That's a question of cost, that's a question of a lot of other sources. But, but dictating material, I think we're getting into the weeds. Then we should just kind of pass on whether or not material is, is an option. Because nobody is going to come before the historic review board with a subpar product and say, hey, can I put this Play-Doh window into this house? And we're going to say, yeah, that's great. So it kind of just seems like if, if anything, we, we're already past this question.
All right. And I concur, um, with, with that comment. I've, I've installed the Fibrex windows. And as I thought about this, I thought.
And as I thought about this, I thought very, very few people will be able to look at it or even feel it and positively identify if they're looking at vinyl, if they're looking at fiberglass, if they're looking at a composite, be it Anderson's or Poltek's or another brand of a composite plastic and fiber product. So I concur that, you know, there's a question about a high-end vinyl window. And what, what is that? It may look exactly the same as a vinyl clad wood window. So I think the detail is more in shape, the style, which ultimately gets problematic. But I, I wouldn't just rule out a product based on the material because I don't think people can discern the difference.
My biggest problem, I've seen these shiny vinyl windows that by just appearance, they're detracting as against, and I, you know, it's not, not that they can be painted or something could be done, but.
Vinyl can't be painted.
Yes, they just look like something that's, in a historic district context.
So I'll also do another time check real quickly. What I'm hearing is not the material as its own checkbox, but if it can meet all the other metrics that the board wants and it happens to be whatever the new material is of the day, then that's okay. But a lot of cheaper vinyls won't meet that checkbox.
Exactly. I don't think that we have a crystal ball as to what the new XYZ vinyl window is going to be next year. So cutting out vinyl doesn't really make sense.
But if you meet the metrics, then you meet the metric.
Absolutely.
Right. I mean, composite materials are appropriate in a lot of situations and, and sometimes last longer and sometimes look, can look better integrity wise. So I mean, yeah, I agree.
Fibrex does look nice.
Okay, so I'm hearing potentially vinyl is fine.
I wouldn't say fine.
Vinyl composite, yeah.
Vinyl is an option if it meets the metrics.
Okay, just wanted to be sure.
You know, to that point, that's, that's today's product line.
Exactly.
But tomorrow's product line, Fibrex is vinyl. It just has a filler, a fiber filler. It's not, it's not fiberglass. So you are essentially looking at a vinyl window. So if, if, if the public can't even tell by feeling or walking up and looking at it the difference, I wouldn't rule out a vinyl window. I mean, they're, it's not a metric in my mind. Because I don't think it's even discernible.
All right, so can we move on to the next question? Sorry, I'm being there. I know, I know. Question number three is about profile. There are shadow lines, you know, discussed in the standards or the guidelines. And I wanted to hear whether, you know, kind of what the, what the flatness cutoff for you is. Are you, does it have to have at least one step back? Does that sort of answer that sufficiently for all of you? Or is it a question of, again, you know, insetting a fairly flat frame into the wall? I think I heard that you're, you don't necessarily need for windows to be inset.
Well, if we're looking at new construction, you're, you're going to be by code on six by wall on an exterior. So if we have a window that, as the Anderson rep was saying, was set back onto a two by four frame, you're going to have a two to three inch setback on the exterior of the house no matter what. We can't predicate what happens inside the home. It would be awesome if we could say that every window has to have a interior jam and jam extension and it's going to be great. We can put plants on it and all these things. That's not something that we can talk about. But on the exterior of the home, even on new construction specifically, if we have a six by exterior wall and a two by four casement on a window, even if it's one of the flat windows, we are building in that setback. And so on the cheapest and most cost effective windows of whatever material they are, we are building that shadow and that depth that we're looking for. So I think that we have to take that into consideration with the rest of everything that we're looking at, that we could probably come up with some kind of guideline because of new construction specifically, that we're not replacing windows with something else, but that we're creating a new structure. And with that six by exterior wall, we are setting back those windows to that plane, which will no matter, regardless of the window, set back that glass plane. So that setback in profile in question three kind of just is already pushed back.
And I think Chair Powell will remember this, but from the Camp presentation, Denver does have that in their guidelines, setting them back. And that's one I struggle with from a practicality sense because it's fairly simple to do the framing aspect of it, but it adds a flashing element that is very potentially problematic. And in the real world, trying to keep flashing details idiot proof is super important. So I would feel, I, I don't think I would ever put thumbs up on requiring windows to be inset because that's, becomes very burdensome actually in actuality for a large part of the new construction application.
Talking about drip edge on top and.
Actually setting them back in because the flashing detail becomes so much more complex to make sure that it's waterproof.
Well, perhaps we could talk about trim then. It seems like, you know, that we keep kind of circling about depth. But, but let's talk about trim just a little bit. And I had posed a question whether a projecting sill should be a minimal requirement in a new window opening. I personally think it should. And almost all windows come with, you know, some sort of option that you can put a sloped sill. But do you want to talk about trim for the rest of the window as well?
Oh, okay.
So I agree with having the sloped sill. And I just think it's part of creating the imagery. And it works.
The imagery?
Yeah.
So if you have a traditional brick mold around the window, you're already setting back the window one inch.
Yeah, but I want that sloped sill to come out, project out a little bit to match up with it.
If you had a brick mold that was set back an inch from the sloped sill.
Right.
And then, but you're, you're also at that point setting back the window two to three inches from the sill, an inch from the brick mold.
Yeah, but I, this is just part of creating something that is, does not detract. It's part of the period. That's, and so what we're trying to do is come up without being abusive, compatibility to period.
Are we, and sorry if I missed this beginning, are we assuming style of build here? Because obviously different windows will vary in, in the, based on the type of, the style of the building that you're putting out, right? So like a mid-century, let's say, window might be single pane, you know, closer, doesn't have that depth. So are we assuming that we, what kind of styles that we're putting in here? Board member Kristen, I think there are really three main architectural styles that are identified for new construction.
Okay.
Bungalow and vernacular, like Western farmhouse vernacular for Kanema. And Queen Anne bungalow and vernacular, like Western farmhouse.
And those are the only ones that are appropriate.
So they're, those are the easy paths. So I would say we're writing a condition for the easy path. And if someone wants to propose their own bespoke proposal, but then that's.
Sorry, this might be my newness.
Yeah.
That actually occurred to me as well. I thought, okay, is there some style? But the only thing I could think of would be in those styles. I think that a sill is very appropriate.
And one thing Kristen can do is can do like an add-on, like if you're doing a bungalow, if you're doing a Queen Anne, if you're doing a vernacular, that can be an add-on piece of the condition.
Right, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
We're pretty short on time. So grids, do you want to hit that?
Yeah, I want to talk very briefly about that. Again, the, the existing window policy says you can either use exterior applied divider grids, you know, along with, you know, any dividers on the inside you want, or not at all. So there are lines that you've seen tonight that just have the interior spacers. And I think those would not be allowed. However, allowing those windows just without those divisions would be fine for, for most styles.
Yeah, I think a single light over a single light by far exceeds the benefit of a fake mutton inside of a window pan.
Yeah.
So I think the current standards are.
I like the current standard myself. Chair Powell, does he have any?
Agreed. Yeah, I agree with that too. I, I, I'm not a big fan of the grids at all. And I think I, the one over one is the way to go when you can.
Chair Powell is calling us from Georgetown right now and he sees all these houses that are internal windows. And he says, no.
Yeah, really, that's it. Actually, I'm calling you from Canada where it's about 10 feet of snow and you can't even see the windows.
Want to jump to cost then?
Yes, I mean, I think cost is, you know, it's, we're not going to be predicating windows on a specific cost. That is, we're trying to make the burden of doing nice windows less, you know, less costly on the homeowner. So I guess I would, I would tell you what I've heard tonight, which is that cost has come up a couple of times with the other attributes that we've talked about. And the majority of you, I believe, don't want to place too great a burden because of cost, which I think is answering this question. I don't know if you would like to talk more about that.
So let me ask Christina this in that we are running over time. And in a little discussion before we started, some of us felt that this is a lot to grapple with in a one hour session. I personally came wanting to learn and then, you know, refine my opinion and so forth. And I had made notes on kind of where I initially am on these questions. And I think you're, you've been hearing that. Would it be appropriate that each of us as board members in the next couple of weeks, let's say, email you any thoughts we have that you can share?
Yeah, Kristen will come back in March. And we could, we could do the March meeting as, as really a clarification of approach. And I can work with Kristen on, you know, maybe thoughts on how best to think about the metric in a way. And so maybe not fully sharing the red lines, but maybe clarification of what we heard. And then you can send, send those to me, you know, and I can forward those on to Kristen. Then we can get kind of confirmation back at the March meeting. Does that work for everybody?
I think that's a great idea because cost is a tremendous factor in this. And if we're talking about doing a single above single as a baseline, then we're cost effective.
Right.
If we're talking about the Marvin ultimate line where we can do five eighths inch manions and, and we can, you know, dictate all these things and do a six over one and even do false, you know? I mean, there's so much into it that we, we really don't want to dive into this right now.
So I guess for our consultants' benefit, if we can take what we've gleaned so far and to the extent each of us want to email you either addressing these questions.
Yeah, actually, I would love, and I'm happy to even send an email, BCC'd out with all the questions written down so you don't have to rewrite them. And then even just send me your thoughts for each question. And I will forward those.
No, no, run that by me again.
Oh, look for an email for me tomorrow with the questions in an email. And I'll BCC the board. And then the board can respond back to me with their kind of individual thoughts.
Okay.
I'll collect them, give them to Kristen. She'll kind of digest them. And in the March meeting, we'll just provide an update and can be a confirmation of the approach.
Yeah, that would give us a chance to share thoughts that we kind of refine now that we've heard this so that you can kind of consolidate it from there and then.
And I recognize that not everyone is going to be on the same page. You know, there's going to be a difference of opinions. But if I can come forward with a majority opinion, then I will be best.
Right.
I would, I would really like for the manufacturers to be a little bit more sensitive to imagery of what is a historic window going into a historic district, of how it looks. And I just find that when I see them, too many of them going in, I, I, I don't like what I see. So the, I, it's not like we're winning the war. And I, I would like to see some change in making sure that they understand doing business in Oregon City in historic districts, that it should be appropriate.
Okay.
There is some hella information if anybody would like to get home and I could, I could get some Marvin information for you too. I don't want to be prejudiced here on that. But I'm going to let the reps come and take the windows if you all have any final questions.
Absolutely, we'd like to thank the reps for coming in tonight.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you.
So with that, Christina, then, they may need to get their product out. Five minute break still doable.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to adjourn this, this work session and then take a five minute break.
Thank you. We will adjourn the, the work session and then we'll reconvene, let's say, at 7:13.